Again, good morning. We are now on the item number nine of the Order of Business for today's regular session, which is the rule call of the members. Madam Secretary, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning all. Honorable Jose Ramil G. Golo, Honorable Rhett Anthony T. Gabronino, Honorable Krisna Villia Wilma, Honorable Rafa C. Olo, Honorable Alberto M. Casil Senior, Honorable Rosalyn O. Paranas, Honorable Edgardo C. Atwell, Honorable Eliseo D. Fialnar, not wrong, Honorable Alna S. De Harme, Honorable Levity Galdo, and Honorable Robe Stewart Loramia. Only one of the members, not wrong, Mr. Chairman.
As reported by the Secretary, only one among the members of the Sanggulang Bayan of Sugod is not wrong, the person of Honorable Fialnar. Therefore, the Chair declares a quorum to proceed with the regular session this morning. In the next order of, for the next Order of Business, we have the reading of the minutes of our previous session and for the approval of the same. Madam Secretary, again, please. We acknowledge the presence of Honorable Eliseo Fialnar, Madam Secretary.
May I proceed? The eighth regular session of the Sanggulang Bayan of Sugod Southern Lady was called to order by Honorable Jose Ramil G. Golo on August 27th to the 25th at 9:17 in the morning. Preliminary's included prayer, singing national anthem, Southern Lady hymn, and a good hymn, followed by the recitation of the Pasil Creed led by the Honorable Robe Stewart Loramia. The ralco was conducted with all the members present, thereby constituting a quorum. Reading and approval of the minutes of the previous session. Honorable Rhett Anthony T. Gabronino moved to dispense with the reading of the full minutes of the previous session, considering that its draft was already emailed to them the previous night, while also citing time constraints and the presence of visitors, thus limiting the reading to legislative actions. The motion was jointly seconded by Honorable Satwell, Villia Wilma, Loramia, Fialnar, De Harme, and Casil Senior. There being no questions, clarifications, and objections presented, the motion was carried. During the review, Honorable Eliseo D. Fialnar requested a correction on Resolution Number 145 to reflect third and final reading. The amendment was noted and approved subsequently. Honorable Alna S. De Harme moved for the adoption and approval of the minutes of the previous session, including legislative actions, which was seconded by Honorable Satwell, Villia Wilma, Loramia, Fialnar, Gabronino, and Casil Senior. There being no questions, clarifications, and objections presented, the motion was carried. Matters arising from the minutes of the previous session. During the discussion on the adoption and approval of the previous committee reports, Honorable Olo raised an observation that no clear actions were indicated regarding the Transportation Committee report. Honorable Paranas clarified that the actions were in fact included in the minutes but were not fully read aloud during the session, which may have caused the oversight. She further suggested that Honorable Olo...
The Honorable De Harme is recognized to have the floor.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman. I move to dispense the reading of the minutes. Only the legislative actions be read, please. Thank you.
You referred the motion of Honorable De Harme to dispense the reading of the minutes and to go directly with the legislative actions. Any second to the motion? Motion is seconded by Honorable Villia, Atwell, Fialnar, Loramia, and Casil Senior. Any questions, clarification, objection? The Chair has none. The motion suggested by carried and approved. Kindly, Madam Secretary, to write directly with legislative actions passed during the last session.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. Let's where the resolutions issued. A resolution earnestly requesting Honorable Senator Christopher Lawrence Go to provide coaster for the athlete of Sugod Southern Lady for their participation in other school and other municipalities. It was moved by, wala pa na finalize sa samlo sa roof. It was moved by Honorable Robe Stewart Loramia and unanimously seconded by all members of the Sanggulang Bayan present. It was approved then or also the documents. A resolution regarding financial assistance to the Sugod Municipal Police Station through police lieutenant Colonel, is it Colonel Dexter V. Idilio, officer in charge in the amount of 14,500 pesos for their participation to the first Regional Directors Cup Level 2 PPSA San Sean Much Markmanship Training on August 29th to 31st, 2025 at Matalas Shooting Range Palo Leite, chargeable against donations under a Moe of the mayor's office. It was moved by Honorable Rosalyn O. Paranas and jointly seconded by Honorable Olo, Fialnar, De Harme, Loramia, Atwell, and Casil Senior. It was approved. A resolution endorsing to the office of the Honorable Damian G. Mercado, Provincial Governor of Southern Leite, Resolution Number 11, Series of 2025 Barangay Lumayan, Sugod Southern Leite for appropriate action. It was moved by Honorable Rosalyn O. Paranas and jointly seconded by Honorable De Harme, Fialnar, Casil Senior, and Atwell. It was approved. A resolution regarding financial assistance in the amount of 10,000 pesos to Barangay Tampu, Barokja Melina for the purchase of PE house for their water system, chargeable against donations under a Moe of the mayor's office. It was moved by Honorable Rosalyn O. Paranas and jointly seconded by Honorable Gabronino, Fialnar, Villia Wilma, De Harme, and Atwell. It was approved. Those were all the minutes and the legislative actions taken opposite of previous regular session. Mr. Chairman.
Take it with us, Secretary. Dear, you have the legislative actions passed during the last session. Anybody would like to correct some provision, parts of the actions or legislative actions passed during the last session? Any corrections or clarifications, please, if you have? If none, may I ask somebody for the approval? The Honorable Paranas is recognized.
Considering that there were no other questions and clarification, Honorable Chairman, for the last regular session's minutes, I move for the adoption and approval of the minutes of the last regular session, Honorable Chairman.
There is a motion of Honorable Paranas for the adoption and approval of the minutes of the previous session, including the legislative actions passed during the last regular session. Anybody to second the motion? Motion seconded by Honorable Satwell, Villia, De Harme, Fialnar, Casil Senior, and Honorable Galdo. Questions, clarification, objection? There is none. The motion is served by carried and approved. Number 11 of the Order of Business, Discussion on the Matters arising from the Minutes of the Previous Session. I think there is none. We will proceed with number 12 in the Order of Business. Visitors are... Ah, okay. We have a visitor this morning. We have here the, still the president of the Protector, Sir Herona. Kindly, proceed, approach the rostrum, sir, and identify yourself and your purpose in coming to the session.
I'm Engineer Losio Herona, civil engineer, farmer by love and passion. This is regarding our concerns with regards to the shelter, because there was already, there was already a resolution many years ago requiring every barangay to have their own shelter, and yet until now, and then we are catering, we are sheltering around more than 50 astridogs, and yet, in fact, we are begging, begging some leftovers from the different restaurants here, and then one of the sad, sad, no, sad incidents that I have proven that, they are selling their leftovers. In fact, we have already, in fact, best meal is a witness of mine that they had signed a memorandum of agreement. So, ang ako lang ba, kung maka, makatabang ang isbe to, to repair our shelter or if possible, the, the local government could do a budget with regards to sheltering of those astridogs. Because it's really, I don't know if, if you have read about Turkey. Turkey, the city of Turkey is, mga astridogs, ang local government kinapakaon nila, o mga citizens mapakaon, wa nila pang, wa nila pangdakpa, wa nila pangihawa, wa nila panginubog, alipamatya, ilagong gikuan, pero ako ba, ilan ang ilahin nung ganang gikapnan ang mga laki, which I think the only, the best remedy of that is pagpangapon ng mga laki, ayaw lang ng mga laki nga, mga, mga kuadilisal ato, kada lang, ayro lang, ayro lang, yeah. What, ah, muna akong ko ang, if we will do something, I think, ma'am, Alna, that's about my concerns, and then, ah, ko ang guna kanang, I've already talked with some vit mid sa issue with regards to sa pagpangapon, and they will do some, they will, they will, they will come if there will, there will be an invitation, and they volunteer ang ilah, mukha na takomodation, which according to them, anyway, makaraquis man sila ang transportation gikan sa visca, so, ang ako lang, ma'am, niyo ba nga, kung ano sa ano gune ma, ma realize atong mga resolution, resolution nga, dugi namang gune, o niya, magkami magpatabang gumi kay, pahapitan na ba, September, ang among, matir, akarunguwa na, matir minute ang among agreement dito sa area, kay, ipakopya ho na sa tagiya, niya, wa gumi kapainan, in fact, I offered one of my areas there in Pamahuan, out of my 10 hectares, okay, I will give you one fourth of my, of a hectare on that area, basta kay ma-sheltered lang ang mga ero, pero, ang ilagong kan is, Sugod bang gune, di man di buntok, so, mura, di, mura ba, laeng kaayon ba, na, mga tuta sa laeng lungsod nga, pwede namang tuta, ta, we have already, may, may, ako ba tagiya, so, muna akong kasi, o sa baguin yong ika, tabang ni ani, kay, maluoy ko, di fact, kapila ako ba rescue ang mga ero dito sa, sa, sa motor pole nga, pilar ba, one meter by two meters, o niya, buta nga, banti kay ero, di na one time gani, nganikua, dituko sa libas, gidakop nila kay, anak-anak paggeduhan, at ni ito, at luha, teti de Franklin, to akong luha, nakikita ako sa mga, mga ituy nga, ibiyaan nga to, o niya, gidakop nila, siaro na po, nakakita sila nga, antutuy sa, 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 sa kaenahan, nagpapagaw, sa topa nag, tibay lang ng dehegi padodo niya, o niya, wa ako siya pagkailam, ako, ako gikuha ang, ang ero, ako nga yato gato sa, yato sa, sa, sa libas, mean, di, 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 dogs are, is, is the best friend, at sa our best friend, and then, kada, is a member of our, of the Yuma Society, so, kamo, kini tingali ko bang, kay, di man sila kasi, kay, mga baby man na mga ero nila, pero, ako kasi hindi ko to mga, 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 mga layaw, in fact, last Monday, napatabang ko, dakop sa police, na papi, ako gindila sa farm, ako nag, ako giglegorong, kay, ko anak ko, niya, ma, 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 ma,[1214.88] We will try and ask for some amount, maybe.
Yeah, but that has been many years ago, ma'am. I mean, if there is a will, there is a way, diba? If you have the will here, you have the way. What is the percentage of amount budget to be budgeted on that particular project is very minimal, very 0.0% the amount you have budgeting. And then, how many percent you've been neglecting that?
Okay, uh, other, uh, honorable at will is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last year, Mr. Chairman, during budgeting the budget of the barangay, last year, you know, I was the barangay chairman of barangay San Miguel. During the budgeting, our budget officer will say to the barangay that you gave some amount of budget for the feeding of astridog that captured the STMJ. That's why the barangay will budget some amount of my barangay. I remember, Mr. Chair, I was able to budget 5,000 or 6,000, amount for about the feeding of astridog that captured STMJ. I don't know the other barangay. As far as I know, during budgeting the barangay, the priority budget will include some amount for the feeding. That's why the engineer Herona able to ask permission. So, we asked the barangay, siguro Liga President, for permission, during the budgeting last year, the budget on barangay San Miguel of 5,000 amount for the feeding of astridog that captured. So, at least, I asked ang Liga President kung ang other barangay nagbudget ba.
Ang nakita mo ano sir? Ang nakita mo ni Ron, only barangay nagbudget ano ang kuwan. Kung ano ba, the barangays, you're able to do some budgeting?
Okay, uh, very technical problem. Uh, the honorable Galdo is recognized.
Barangay ang nagbudget ano, ngakuwan kay ang kaaswagan kung ano din naman mapadaan nila mga dogs pa doon dire. So, kasagaran nagbudget ano sa wit in the town, rah. Population June 1 to June 5, ano, may kasagaran. Emor may kasagaran makuha sa taga STMJ kanang mga task force mga kuwan sa iro para mapadasa protectors. Ang sa amo sa Libas gani, for example, na ako'y madakpan dito. Kami maganing barangay usahay mangpakaon. Sa amo nalaman pungip kuwan, kaya ang amo gutong multahan nitong tag-isa man sa iro, gatun.
Uh, honorable Paranas is recognized, you have the floor.
Um, good morning, everyone. Considering everybody's opinions and ideas regarding today's budget for the shelter of the captured dogs. I think, Honorable Chairman, kung wa'tay budget para ana as the honorable de Harme manifested earlier. Uh, I think the most pinakaduol o pinakadali nga uh, solution ano is sa ahong pagtuobain. My humble opinion, Honorable Chairman. Maghimo taong morag fundraising, somewhat like that. Kaya, Ron nga, community-based nga fundraising, kay daghan ba diya mga dog lovers sa sugod? Kung ang atong lungsod, kay bao, kay bao mantangtanan nga, nag sugod na ang atong park, pag-wapa, ang atong sugod gym, nag sugod na po si Jao, panindot. So, morag daghan takar mo pa ipag sugod sa kanang, bag upapod ng lingkod ang mga bagong elected official. So, daghang nakatambak na mga ati manunon. So, tingali, Sir Boy, ang mangitag tagpaagin nga na tay fundraising himo on, on Ja, joined by the old dog lovers sa sugod. Tingali, na tingali by morabitao raffle draw like kanang mga maligya tag ticket, pagkahuman na ay daugon. So, ang ginansya at to, may atong himo on nga uh, dog shelter sa atong mga iro. Maunay pinakaduol dun o pinakadali nga ahong nakita, Sir Boy. So, I want to have a meeting with the dog lover, uh, dog sa paw protectors, kay ato na hisgutan. So, I will schedule a meeting for that together with the Chairman on Environment and Health, also Honorable Chairman. So, Madam Secretary, I want to kanang schedule a meeting for that. So, atong mahisgutan, kay kung maghisgut lagi taong budget, abtantag ko sa kaadlaw, inga na, wa'tay kakuhaan. So, maunay pinakaduol, orong hisgutan ato, gunsa'y atong mga prices sa atong fundraising, okay?
Uh, before, uh, ma'am, uh, honorable Gabrielino raises his hand first. And then honorable William will follow.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Sir Boy. Uh, we just like to be clarified, you mentioned this month? Ang onsa may kutob nalaman ka tong buwan na?
Ang among, ang among pag, pag, pagpupuyo sa among mga iro dito sa area kadi man private man nag-ioffer malalayaw ang area. And then, we had, we had already the government attest that waling me, and then, na problema, ako, ako ganun ioffer pa na tyo tas mahawano, I can give them 1,000 square meters. Pero, layo namang gud po to. Kaya, ma'am, kala po imong funding, ma'am. Kala kung, mayu na na, ma'am, kala ba, uh, we will just discuss that, Ron. And I would like to inform you that I'm out of town for a month, uh, starting Monday. So, I will just inform Mrs. Albetron with regards to your plan, okay?
Kuwan man, communication to them, kung naanatay schedule sa meeting kahit atong sabutan dito, kahit dali ramana, magpahimo taong mga raffle ticket. Magpahimo taong raffle ticket. So, Madam Secretary, I think if the Chairman on Committee on Environment and Health is available next week, Tuesday morning, or on sa main, jong gusto afternoon ba or morning kay kung wa'se Sir Boy, maka proceed me para madali.
Oo, okay.
Kuya, kung antingali, maghimo tingatig, I think, uh, I will also, later na, atong hisgutan kay I am contemplating making an ordinance po regarding to the protection and the shelter of the dogs. Aron, matagaan duchidag, kay when manggood na ano duch ordinance sa mapugusad dudag himo, hatag o budget, okay?
Before, uh, follow-up question, Red?
Mr. Chairman, Sir Boy, correct me if I'm wrong, mauna ang ato ang naasa LP konsepcyon?
Oo, nasa konsepcyon, nasa konsepcyon, uh, dool sa kanang
Kanang dool sa resident sa mga rodika?
Oo, I don't, family nimnala na, basta kay nasa intersection daw.
I would like to suggest, Mr. Chairman, uh, given the gravity of his, uh, the problem of the organization, the Sugod Protectors, I would like to suggest for the organization to lobby with the municipal mayor with this concern, no? The gravity of the problem that they are facing.
Yeah, yeah, in fact, I have lived it personally.
Also, Mr. Chairman, uh, the second concern that I heard from Sir Boy is the katong mga leftovers ato ang fast food chains nga ibaligya na nila. And currently, Mr. Chairman, I have a draft of the Animal Welfare Act. Maybe we can include any agreement between the food industry to donate their mga leftovers. Maybe we can go into a memorandum agreement with the uh, fast food chain research man, uh, thank you.
Uh, yes, follow-up question?
No, 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 and in addition to honorable Gabrielino's idea, during also in the meeting, nga ahong Chair, kuwan, ahong imbitaron po dapel, uh, Mam Arlin, ang, ang, ang manginasal o ang sa to atong imbitar sa una, Jollibee, morag wa't man siguro na nila gibuhad karoon. So, ato ramana silang ipaloapod, kay basig na wa'po nila ma-priority.
Okay, uh, honorable William, then after honorable William, honorable Casil.
Thank you.
And honorable Lory.
Good morning, good morning, Sir Boy. No, um, pariyara mi kuwan ni Red, ni honorable Gabrielino. I just want to clarify nga, katong imong dimension nga, ang leftovers sa manginasal is for sale. And as per my discussion with the Chairman of the Committee Health, naanakuna na siya imoa. So, we need to review the moa, kung unsa'y content dito. Kay kung ang sa moa is just to give the leftover, then they don't have to sell it. So, we need to revisit the moa between manginasal and Jollibee.
Well, excuse me, sir.
Okay, ano, Boy, please?
Ah, Jollibee, tunod, tukanan talamo, morag tumikawatan kay Jollibee, ang mo dito ang sito, ukuha na ilang leftover. Niya, kini hangnow, nabagado dito, pangado sa mga, kanang, maganay chicken joy gani nga, kani dakwa, kanang, sanipis piking. Nabagka-bagka dito, saning now, kikandito, magsusuri dito, angko kay
Chairman, if I may ask, eh, Sir Boy, pila naman din nakabuka atong iro, Ron nga, atong gibakahon.
30 plus dito.
Parang daghanan, no? My god, saan man na?
So, honorable Casil?
Uh, during the approval of a budget of the barangay, there's a mandatory application na gibutang dina, uh, the amount. So, siguro, we asked the one, permission to, Sir Boy, nga, mukonit lang sirosa barangay nya, tagaan lang sirosa atong idiyang barangay nga, mukahen po sila gamay kung magkatalhatag ba o another funds for sa naa magiging budget ano, kay before approving the annual budget sa barangay, naaduto mandatory nga, kuwan sa dog dumiskiting, kuwan.
Okay, noted, honorable Casil, uh, honorable William.
Sir Chair, I think it would be better to refer the matter to the committee. So, at least she can schedule for the hearing and invite the restaurant owners and the kanang mga crispy king, kanang mga namaligya o ingnananagani, to invite them. So, at least they will be aware and they will be kanang matagaan po sila o kanang enlightenment on sa ka need ang ilahang mga bukog para sa mga iro. Then, it might be we can craft an ordinance to man, kanang mandatory silang amohatag. So, I would suggest to refer the matter to the committee, Mr. Chair, thank you.
We have honorable Lorymia, Lorymia, please.
Thank you, honorable Chair, good morning. Uh, Sir Boy, good morning. So, this is only a suggestion, Mr. Chair, to, uh, uh, good idea to honorable Paranas that we will have fundraising. So, I will suggest, Mr. Chair, nga, considering that this month is our municipal mayor's birth month, uh, i-help nalaman na to ang fundraising inig dool sa boarding mayor kay para atong ma-appel sa atong activity. As soon as possible kay para ang problem ni Sir Boy is masolbat po nga sa'yo. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Honorable Chairman?
Okay.
I will call the mayor and I will tell him about this kanang meeting with you, Sir Boy. Aron maka kuwan sa kay dog lover mapunta sa mayor. Um, sige, thank you, okay?
Honorable Olo?
Uh, thank you, honorable Chairman, good morning, everyone. This is with regards to the manifestation of our visitor, uh, the boy. With regards to the budget, no? Uh, I just want to remind everyone that the budget of the barangay is for the operation of their dog pound in their barangays. If ever they want to contribute or help to the protectors, there should be a memorandum of agreement considering that the barangay will encounter problems in the audit of their transactions, honorable Chairman. Just like the budget also of the municipality. If ever, uh, we would like to extend help to the protectors, I think there's a need for a moa so that every role of the local government and the protectors should be stipulated, honorable Chairman. And that we can allocate funds for that. So, that is, I think I am to the proposal of honorable Paranas to call a meeting and so that everything will be discussed thoroughly and we can, uh, hopefully we can come up with a good uh, legislation to support the protectors that are uh, catering the astridogs in our municipality, honorable Chairman, thank you.
You, uh, honorable Olo, uh, last?
Honorable Chairman?
Yes, uh, yours? And kindly also, uh, set your schedule for the meeting.
Already, I already set a meeting.
There's no date yet?
Tuesday next week.
Um, that would be September 9, September 9?
Uh, for the record, honorable Chairman, I would like to be reflected this on the minutes of this regular session, honorable Chairman, that I will also include, uh, because this is a community-based fundraising event, honorable Chairman. I want also to include during the, this suggested, uh, event nga appeal ang adaption, ang pagadapod sa mga iro o aga, appeal, apilo na to ang mga local businesses owners kay napuna sila 'yung mga iro, kuya, daghan po sila matabang, ato na sila imbitaron during the time. And also, maghimutag program, aron ma-aware dud ang kadaganan, ananato iheal dya sa atong public stage. Thank you.
Uh, yes, honorable Olo?
Uh, in addition to the fundraising activities, honorable Chairman, I remembered in our cockpit ordinance, we can, uh, give uh, cockpit activities, cockfight activities if it is, uh, sponsored by, for a charity, honorable Chairman. So, I suggest the protectors to coordinate with the MSWD office considering that it is the office that will recommend to the mayor for the giving of, uh, the the schedule for that charity event, honorable Chairman. It's sponsored by protectors for this charity cockfight, honorable Chairman, and to be approved by this chamber. So, I think that is, uh, one of my proposals only to so that the, the organization, the protectors can, uh, gather funds for the, uh, welfare of our dogs that are impound in the, in their, uh, area, honorable Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, honorable Olo. So, with all these good suggestions, Sir Boy, we will be conducting, uh, joint committees, we'll be conducting a committee meeting on September 9. And what time are the members available, uh, sit in the morning or in the afternoon? Uh, Committee on Health?
Yes, Committee on Health, Social Services, ako
Peace and Order?
Social Services?
Social Services.
Yes, and the Health and the Environment. O, daghan galing tangat, to nalaman ang video sa conference kung kung okay dito kay naman ang taga paw protectors. I want majority of the members of the paw protectors should be present, Sir Boy. But you can suggest to the person imong mention kanina nga naghangju ang isbe, nga kanang maningkamot sila, nga daghan sila kay parang na'y collective nga ideas. Kay as what you have heard sa mga members, maningkamot should may nga makapangita tagpaagi kay ukwarta lagi atong hisgutan. Maunay pinakalisod pangitaon, maunang mangitag tag idea o gunsaon ato.
Sir, kay ang mga kasagaran, kuwan, to sa, kuwan ba, ang nanrabaho ba? Ang amo, ulagi, ang sila ba, to, to sa, to sa siput? Ang mga, ang mga aktib gayo ba? And then, uh, muna bit ako sa akin, ako nalay ni represent sa pagkakaroon kay morag na, uh, naanggo, pero
Dog pagtagad sa lungsod, kinahanglan ang atong presensya ni Ani. So, kung ingaan ang injung bugma sa 'yung mga iro, pangulik mo dire kay gunsaon na kinahanglan na niya dakwa, niya event because it is a charity kuwan, program. Ananato iheal din ha, so kinahanglan may idea ninjung.
Ah, ay, kanang, so that, that charity program, uh, kinahanglan sila member not, not during the meeting or, uh, during, uh, the meeting? I will, I will try that. I, I will try that, I will try that, okay? Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Sir Boy, Herona. And the, uh, scheduled, uh, time is, what time? 9 o'clock or 2 o'clock in the afternoon? 2 o'clock in the afternoon, para taas taas of time. Okay, so September 9 at 2 o'clock in the afternoon. Kindly take notice of the scheduled date. Okay, with the officers of the Paw Protector Society in our municipality. And there is also of the invited guests on that committee, uh, joint committee meeting. Okay, he is our only, he is only our visitor this morning. Okay, so we will proceed with, uh, item number 13 for the privilege hour. Anybody would like to enjoy the privilege? Honorable Lorymia raises his hand, you have the floor, honorable Lorymia.
Hello, thank you, Mr. Chair, I would like to remark one resolution.
Uh, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. Uh, one resolution for, uh, honorable Lorymia. Others, uh, honorable William?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I want to remark one ordinance, thank you.
One ordinance for honorable William. Honorable Galdo?
Uh, I have three earmark resolutions, honorable Chair, for financial assistance and medical assistance.
Three resolutions for financial assistance by our League President, honorable Galdo. Others, honorable Paranas is recognized. You have one ordinance earmarked by honorable Paranas. Others, uh, like to enjoy the privilege this morning. Uh, no more, then we will, uh, we will now proceed with number 14 in the order of business for the reading of references to the corresponding committees of the following. Uh, under ordinances, uh, uh, the barangay ordinances of barangay Javier of this municipality. These are tax ordinance number one, series of 2024. Uh, ordinance, I mean, the revised barangay tax ordinance number one, series of 2024, entitled, and ordinance collecting or charging fees on issuance of the barangay clearance, barangay certificates, and other use of barangay facilities and barangay-owned properties of barangay Javier, sugod saan and late. And the other ordinance is number two, series of 2024. And this is about the Araw ng barangay, celebration of barangay Javier. And, uh, we all, we will also tackle, tackle under the, um, under the business of the day, another ordinance of the same barangay. Yes, okay. Uh, because there are three ordinance for the same barangay. Ordinance, uh, mandating new court for, court few hours for children 12 years old and below, from 6 o'clock in the evening to 4 o'clock in the morning, prescribing the proper procedure for their apprehension and custody and other purposes. So, this, uh, we will refer these three ordinances of barangay Javier. First, detox ordinance, we'll refer this to our Committee on Finance, honorable Casil, for your, uh, attention, this, uh, ordinance number one of uh, barangay Javier. So, you may, uh, conduct your committee meeting on this, honorable Casil.
I, I would like to schedule this coming
Honorable Olo?
Ordinance of barangay Javier, honorable Chairman, so that, uh, they will come to this office at once, honorable Chairman. I suggest that this will be referred to a joint committee in all three ordinances, honorable Chairman, so that, uh, in one time, the barangay officials will be present in this chamber, thank you, honorable Chairman.
Thank you, honorable Olo. The, uh, okay, we will also have the Committee on Finance. Number two is Declaration of barangay Celebration, Araw ng barangay Celebration of barangay Javier. This will be under what committee on? A Committee on barangay first of the honorable Galdo. And the third ordinance is the court few hours of barangay Javier. This will be also tackled, this will be under the Committee Chairman, honorable Paranas, for the peace and order. So, as suggested by honorable Olo, we will have a joint committee meetings of the three, uh, committee, uh, committees. Committee on Finance, Committee on barangay Affairs, and Committee on Peace and Order. By the honorable sa Casil, Galdo, honorable Paranas, all the three ordinances. You may agree on the available dates, uh, um, lady and gentleman, uh, regarding the dates of the committee meeting. The session will be on, uh, September 10. So, afternoon on September 10, yes, honorable Galdo?
Kay Liga, National Liga Convention na mo sa Manila, 8, 9, 10, 11. So, Mircolis, di po kualipilable ano, kay 11 pa may may mahaman.
We can have it on 8, Monday. Napa may time pag send. How early sa, ila sa 8? So? Communication, um. Okay. Okay, so September 15 to 19, what is your traveling on Labao? September?
15, no, 16, no larga.
Monday, okay, okay. So?
Hapon.
Hapon. Yes. So, our committee meeting for these three committees will be on September 15 at 2 o'clock in the afternoon because our session day will be on the morning, morning of September 15 because of the travel of the, uh, SP members. Okay, so that's already settled, the September 15, 2 o'clock in the afternoon. Okay? So, thank you, uh, Chairman of the different committees. Um, we will have, number two, we have, we also have the ordinance number one, series of 2025 barangay Libas, entitled, and ordinance authorizing the supplemental budget number one, series of 2025. This involves an amount of 640,000 for the following project with the, which are the following, the purchase of the lead flood type light and sound system for the multipurpose center, the installation of the solar streetlights, and installation of the glass door and glass office cubicle of barangay Libas. We will refer this to the Committee on Finance of honorable Casil. Then, uh, letter B, uh, resolutions. Okay, we will tackle this again in the order of business. And petition, we have no petition submitted this morning. And communication. Communication, the first communication is a request for resolution interposing no objection for the application of injur Antonio Ischiavari for the force release at barangay La Porosima Concepcion of So Good Son de Leite in front of the private property owned by Mauro El Tinio under tax declaration number 0917002000544 and property ID number 045-17-0020 situated at the same area. But before that, we will have a short recess before we will have, uh, our, we will discuss the communication received by the Soina Bayo. Short recess.
Okay, good morning once again, session resumed.
Anybody, uh, with regards to this communication? Uh, the Honorable Gabrino is recognized.
Chairman, good morning. Um, based on the attachments sent by our secretary last night, only, I only found the letter of request, Mr. Chairman. Uh, there is no other documents attached like certification from our MPDC. And I just recently checked before the restroom of our session, Mr. Chairman. Uh, wala pa man ang heads sa MPDC, topa daw sa Cebu. And di pa sila ka-verify if certified na ba ang maong request, Mr. Chairman. So, uh, if it's okay, if, is it okay, Mr. Chairman? Uh, maybe can we defer this, uh, communication, Mr. Chairman, before passing interposing no objection?
Okay, uh, noted Honorable Gabrino. Honorable Olo is recognized.
Uh, thank you, Honorable Chairman. Uh, in addition to Honorable Gabrino's manifestation, Honorable Chairman, uh, it is, I think it is right to defer the discussion for this, Honorable Chairman, considering that, uh, we have a pending, uh, uh, plan of the chain with regards, uh, chain, for the shipyard, uh, uh, industry in our LP conception. It might, uh, encroach or it may be the place that they have applied for. And in the request, I think, uh, it is not mentioned there the purpose of the application for that, uh, for sureless agreement, Honorable Chairman. So I think, uh, it is much better if we will, uh, um, schedule a committee meeting with regards to this so that everything will be, uh, discussed thoroughly, Honorable Chairman. Thank you.
So, uh, as, uh, suggested by the two members of this honorable body, there's a need to, uh, defer the discussion and taking any action on the, uh, request for resolution, interposing no objection, considering that there's a need to study the, um, request from Engineer Chivari, and there is also, uh, lacking documents that are not attached to the, to the request as also manifested by the Honorable Gabrino. So we will defer this, uh, uh, discussion on this, uh, subject matter and, uh, we will... Refer this, we will refer this to, to the committee on, I think this is under zoning. So we will just refer to the, uh, chairmanship of Honorable Olo, uh, under the zoning. Uh, all right, sorry. Honorable Ret. uh, Gabrino, uh, the Chair now of the Committee on Zoning and also, uh, the Environment, uh, Committee of Honorable Pailar. So we will just discuss this, uh, and this, we will refer this to the committees as we, uh, mentioned earlier. Second communication, this is a letter from a certain attorney, Sam Dominic Lagunzad, in behalf of the Honorable Nathan G. A. Gabrino, the punong barangay of Zone 3, in response to SB Resolution Number 75 Series of 2025 entitled, "A Resolution Retiring the Directive to the barangay Fisal sa barangay Zone 3 of this municipality to vacate the lot currently occupied as the barangay hall in compliance with Resolution Number 609 Series of 2024 on or before August 31, 2025." I read the letter from Attorney Lagunzad and, uh, for me, there's a need to, uh, thoroughly discuss this subject matter, considering that this is also concerning the displacement of a certain barangay hall of this municipality. I suggest that we will discuss this on a committee of the hall because we cannot, uh... Can we have it, uh, scheduled next week and have a full discussion on this subject matter? Um, can, can we have it on September, Honorable Olo?
I think we will be having our discussion this afternoon, Honorable Chairman, with regards to the PCL activity. How about we will, uh, include that later so that, uh, we can have an early discussion with regards to this, Honorable Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, thank you for the reminder. We have another meeting this afternoon, so we will include this, uh, letter from Attorney Lagunzad in this afternoon's, uh, meeting together with, uh, the main, uh, subject matter with the PCL activities for the month of, uh, September. So this is scheduled for, uh, this afternoon's, uh, meeting. For the calendar of business, under number 15, unfinished business and business of the day, ordinances. For ordinances, we have earmarked ordinance from Honorable, I think Honorable Villia and Honorable Paranas. So we have Honorable Villia first, then after Honorable Paranas.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman. An ordinance amending municipal ordinance number 2014-91 entitled, "The 2014 Traffic Code of the Municipality of Sugod Southern Lake," specifically Article 15, Section 123, "by changing the allocation to PNP members and traffic enforcers from 15% to 10% and providing 10% allocation to Task Force Sugod." Thank you, Mr. Chair.
The, uh, there is the, uh, proposed amendment of the traffic, uh, ordinance of the Municipality of Sugod. I think this is 2014 Traffic Ordinance of the Municipality of Sugod as, uh, proposed by the Honorable Villia. It's now, um... And this is now considered for the first reading. There is no... Wala pa may committee meeting, eh?
Um, Mr. Chair, actually, this is already for public hearing because this was already from the committee report regarding the sharing of the incentives. So this is the pending one. So we will just include this one in the public hearing together with all the amendments of, uh, traffic code. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So this is, uh, not a new ordinance. Um, it is due for public hearing already. Okay, so we will, uh, include that in the next, uh, scheduled public hearings together with the other, um, pending ordinances of this, uh, sagundan. Our, uh, next, uh, proponent of another ordinance, we have Honorable Paranas.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman, uh, for the first reading. An ordinance requiring all government entities, non-government organizations, private institutions, political parties or groups, and politicians and private persons to secure written approval from the office of the municipal mayor before the conduct of events, gatherings, and public services held in public places and other similar activities within the municipality and providing penalties for violation thereof. And, uh, okay, thank you, Honorable Chairman. And I will, uh, schedule a meeting right after, at the same day, Honorable Chairman, sa katung meeting sa Pao Protectors. Kaya ang mga members sa... Oh, ang aron ang mga members na apod around naso in one, kung ano laman in one setting.
Okay, for a while. Um, the ordinance as proposed by the Honorable Paranas is entitled, "An ordinance requiring all government entities, non-government organizations, private institutions, political parties or groups, and politicians and private persons to secure written approval from the office of the municipal mayor before the conduct of the events, gatherings, and public services held in public places and other similar activities within the municipality and providing penalties for violation thereof," is now considered on the first, uh, reading. So the schedule for the conduct of the committee meeting is, uh, also on September, September 9, at 2 o'clock? At 3 o'clock in the afternoon, right after the meeting with the Pao Protector Society. Yes, Pao Protector Society in Sugod. Okay, thank you, Honorable Paranas, for the submitted ordinance. After ordinances, we have resolutions. We have two executive agenda plus eight additional executive agenda. From the office of the municipal mayor, this is dated September 1, 2025. The Honorable Presiding Officer through the Honorable Sagundang Bayan Members of Sugod Southern Lake, sir, enclosed here with please find executive agenda as urgent measure for your honor's favorable action. Number one is a passage of a resolution for the creation of four mandatory positions. Municipal Agricultural and Biosystems Engineer, uh, salary, salary grade 24 slash 1. Municipal Cooperative Development Officer, salary grade 24 slash 1. Municipal Persons with Disabilities Affairs Officer with salary grade 24 slash 1. And Municipal Youth Development Officers with salary grade 24 dash 1. May I ask somebody for the passage of this resolution? Honorable Olo is recognized, please.
Uh, thank you, Honorable Chairman. Uh, just a short information, Honorable Chairman. This for, uh, uh, items, Honorable Chairman, has been already created in our municipality, but considering the salary grade is only 18, and what is mentioned in the, as a mandatory position is this municipal, uh, Biosystems Engineer is salary grade 24. That's why we have to create this salary grade 24. So at this junction, I move to pass a resolution, or I pass an ordinance creating this mandatory positions. Number one, Municipal Agricultural and Biosystems Engineer, salary grade 24, step 1. Number two, Municipal Cooperative Development Officer, salary grade 24, step 1. Municipal Persons with Disability Affairs Officer, salary grade 24, step 1. And Municipal Youth Development Officer, salary grade 24, step 1. Thank you, Honorable Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Olo. There is a motion. Anybody to second the same. The motion seconded by Honorebals Galdo, Casil, Gabrino, Diarmi, Villia, Atwell. Um, Honorable unanimously seconded, Honorable Paranas. Unanimously seconded by all the members present, the motion is served by carried and approved. Second is, uh, resolution for loan assistance to Ms. Elvira Kimson and Henry C. Balaurro Jr., the bids and awards, bids and awards committee secretariat in amount of 1,000 pesos per month. May I ask somebody for... Honorable, uh, Casil, our finance, uh, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to pass our resolution giving the loan assistance to Ms. Elvira Kimson and Henry C. Balaurro Jr., back secretariat in the amount of 1,000 pesos per month. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
This will be charged against the MOA of the office of the municipal mayor. There's a motion of Honorable, uh, Casil Senior, anybody to second. Uh, the same is seconded by Atwell, Paranas, uh, Villia, Loremia, um, Galdo, Diarmi, uh, Gabrino, and Pailar. Questions? Clarification? Objection? There's none. The motion is served by approved. We have additional, uh, executive agenda. This is dated September 3, 2025. Please find the additional executive agenda certified as urgent measure for your honor's favorable action to it. Number one is a passage of a resolution granting financial assistance in favor of barangays and roque sugod in the amount of 40,000 pesos for the payment of the sound system during their cultural activities. Okay, so we will, uh, have the, another set of executive agenda from, still from the office of the municipal mayor. Number one is a passage of a resolution authorizing the municipal mayor of Sugod Southern Lake to enter into a memorandum of agreement, or MOA, on the utilization of the five hectare grassland within the community-based forest man, forest management area, or CBFMA, managed by the barangay kopian Forest Developers Association of Sugod, or Baca Fudas, by and between the barangay kopian Forest Development Association of Sugod and the local government unit, LGO of Sugod, for the establishment of the LGO's vegetable production. Our Chair on Agriculture, please, on number one.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman. I move to pass a resolution authorizing the municipal mayor of Sugod Southern Lake to Honorable Mayor Shepherd Lino Estan to enter into a memorandum of agreement with, on the utilization of five hectare grassland with the community-based forest management areas, CBFMA, managed by the barangay kopian Forest Developers Association of Sugod, Baca Fudas, by and between the Baca Fudas and the local government unit of Sugod for the establishment of the LGO's vegetable production. Thank you, Honorable Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Olo. There's a motion. Anybody to second the same. The motion is unanimously seconded by all the members present. The motion is served by carried and approved.
Honorable Chairman, uh, just a small correction, Honorable Chairman. Uh, I think, uh, the officer or the president of Baca Fudas should be mentioned in the, uh, memorandum of agreement as signatory, Honorable Chairman, in behalf of Baca Fudas.
Okay, so we will, uh...
Represented by the president. Thank you.
We will, uh, um, Madam Secretary kindly ask the name of the, this association's president, uh, Baca Fudas, for insertion of this resolution. Thank you, Honorable Olo. Second is a passage of a resolution strongly endorsing to the Regional Executive Director, Andrew Rodolfo Oriz, DVM, Department of Agriculture Regional Office, number 8, at Takloban City, this, uh, for the requested livelihood project, namely, the Duck Multiplier Farm under the Livelihood Economic Enterprise Development Program of the Development of, Department of Agriculture. May we request again, Honorable Olo, for the passage of number two resolution.
Goodness Vice Chair. Uh, thank you, Honorable Chairman. Uh, again, I move to pass a resolution strongly endorsing to the Regional Executive Director, Andrew Rodolfo Oriz, DVM, Department of Agriculture Regional Office, number 8, Takloban City, the requested livelihood project, namely Duck Multiplier Farm under the Livelihood Economic Enterprise Development Program of the Department of Agriculture. Thank you, Honorable Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Olo. Uh, anybody to second the said motion. Motion is unanimously seconded by all the members present. The motion is served by carried. Third is a passage of a resolution granting financial assistance in favor of Mr. Wilson Apoli, the General Manager of Lake South Multipurpose Cooperative and the Chairperson of the Sugod Bay Cluster of Sugod Southern Lake for their Cooperative Summit 2025 in amount of 10,000 pesos, chargeable against donations under the MOA of the mayor's office. May we ask Honorable Paranas, uh, the amount is 10,000 pesos.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman. I move to pass a resolution granting financial assistance in favor of Mr. Wilson Apoli, General Manager of Lake South MPC and Chairperson of Sugod Bay Cluster, Sugod Southern Lake for their Cooperative Summit 2025 in the amount of 10,000, chargeable against donation under MOE of the mayor's office. Thank you, Honorable Chairman.
Honorable Paranas, there's a motion of Honorable Paranas. Anybody to second the said motion? The motion seconded by Honorebals Olo, Atwell, Villia, we have Loremia, uh, Casil. Unanimously seconded by all the members present. The motion is served by carried and approved. Number four is a passage of a resolution adapting the Municipal Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Council, MDRRMC Resolution Number 8 Series of 2025, a resolution approving the Municipal Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Investment Plan, or MDRRMIP, for calendar year 2026 of Sugod Southern Lake. Our Chairman on, uh, disaster, uh, Honorable, uh, Pailar, please.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman. I move to pass a resolution adapting the Municipal Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Council, MDRRMC. Resolution Number 8, that's a series of 2025, a resolution approving a municipal disaster risk reduction and management investment plan for calendar year 2026 of Sugod Southern Lake. Thank you, Honorable Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable, uh, Pailar. There's a motion of Honorable Pailar. Anybody to second the motion? Seconded by, uh, Atwell, uh, unanimously seconded by all the members present. The motion is served by carried and approved. And we have number five is, uh, this is for the passage of a resolution authorizing the payment of the catering service tender to be, uh, catering service to be tendered during the peer or P E E R educational training on A, uh, AHRH on emergencies, September 15 to 17, 2025, at the second floor of the Liga Hall, barangay Zone 5, Sugod Southern Lake in the amount of 67,500 pesos, chargeable against the youth development programs and activities. Our Escape Federation President, this is for the youth. Honorable Loremia, please, for number, number five.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning. I move to pass a resolution authorizing payment of catering service to be tendered during the peer education training on AHRH and emergencies on September 15 to 17, 2025 at second floor, Liga Hall, barangay Zone 5, Sugod Southern Lake in the amount of 67,500 pesos, chargeable against youth development programs and activities. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, there's also the activity design, uh, submitted, uh, to this, uh, honorable body. So there's a motion of the Honorable Loremia. Anybody to second the said, uh, said motion? Motion is seconded by Villia. We have, uh, Pailar, uh, Paranas, uh, Honorable, uh, uh, Gabrino, Galdo, Casil, and, uh, Diarmi, and also Honorable Atwell, also seconded. Any questions? Clarification? Question, Honorable Galdo, please?
Address of barangay Zone 4, Ligan ng mga barangay. This barangay Zone 4, Honorable Chairman. Thank you.
The, uh, uh, correct the, uh, location of barangay Liga to barangay Zone 4, Sugod Southern Lake. Uh, questions? Clarification? Objection? There's none. The motion is served by approved. Number six is a passage of a resolution authorizing the payment of snacks and lunch tendered during the farmer's orientation on school on air under Masaganang Coco Buayan Radio Squela sa Pagnini Yogan on July 11, uh, last July 11 to 12, 2025, barangay Dag Saan, barangay Mac Sugod Southern Lake in the amount of 63,000 pesos, chargeable against other maintenance and operating expenses under the Municipal Agriculture Office. Uh, would like to request our Vice Chair on Agriculture, Honorable Casil, for the passage of the resolution.
Honorable Chairman, I move to pass a resolution authorizing payment of snacks and lunch tender during the farmer's orientation on school or in air or soa under Masaganang Coco Buayan Radio Squela ng Pagnini Yogan on July 11, 12, 2025 at barangay Dag Saan, Mac Sugod Southern Lake in the amount of 63,000 pesos, chargeable against other maintenance and operating expenses under the Municipal Agriculture Office. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, thank you, Honorable Casil. There's a motion of Honorable Casil. Anybody to second the motion? Motion is, uh, seconded, Honorebals Olo, Paranas. We have, uh, Loremia, uh, unanimously, unanimously seconded by all the members present. The motion is served by carried. Number seven, passage of a resolution allocating an amount of 93,750 pesos for the expenses incurred during the community knowledge caravan in the Municipality of Sugod last, uh, April 20, 2025 at the ICP Gymnasium of Sugod Southern Lake, chargeable, chargeable against other maintenance and operating expenses under the MOA of the mayor's office. This is under the committee on? Okay, maybe, uh, this is, uh, for the community knowledge, this is under education. We'd like to request Honorable, um, Krisna Villia for the passage of number seven.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I move to pass a resolution allocating an amount of 93,750 for the expenses incurred during the community knowledge caravan in the Municipality of Sugod on April 20, 2025 at ICP Gymnasium, Sugod Southern Lake, chargeable against other maintenance and operating expenses under MOE of the mayor's office. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Villia. There's a motion of the Honorable Krisna Villia. Anybody to second the same motion? Motion seconded by, uh, Loremia, uh, Diarmi, Gabrino, Pailar, Casil, and Galdo. Uh, any questions? Clarification? Objection? The chair has none. The motion is served by carried. Uh, number eight, according to our, uh, secretary, this has already been passed through a resolution last, I think, uh, for the past, uh, regular session, this has already been approved, uh, this resolution, number eight. So we will, uh, uh, continue with the next additional, uh, executive agenda still from the office of the municipal mayor. The date is September 3, 2025. Number one is a passage of a resolution granting financial assistance in favor of barangay Sandroque Sugod in the amount of 40,000 pesos for the payment of the sound system during their cultural activities chargeable against socio-cultural activities budget under the MOA of the mayor's office. Our district, uh, barangay, is barangay Atwell, uh, barangay, barangay Sandroque, Honorable Atwell? Under your... For number one?
I move to pass a resolution requesting...
I move to pass a resolution requesting?
May we host the Justice Counselor, Barangay Sandroque? Master Three? Uh, Honorable, uh, I think Honorable Filear, Barangay Sandroque? Sorry, Honorable Atwill, Honorable Filear?
Thank you, Honorable Chairman. I move to pass a resolution granting financial assistance in favor of Barangay Sandroque, So Good Southern Late, in the amount of 40,000 pesos for payment of sound system during their cultural activities, chargeable against socio-cultural activities budget under MOE of the mayor's office. Thank you, Honorable Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Filear. There is a motion of Honorable Filear, anybody to second? The motion seconded by Honorable Sulo, uh, Atwill, we have Paranas, Villia, Diarmi, uh, Galdo, and Honorable Gabrino. Questions? Honorable, and also Honorable Casil, also seconded. Questions? Clarification? Objection? There is none. The motion is served by carried. We have, uh, the next resolution is, uh, passage of a resolution allocating an amount of 84,550 pesos for the expenses to be incurred during the strengthening collaboration for effective barangay drug clearing, coordination meeting with the PDA and BADAX in the municipality of So Good, chargeable against Anti-Drug Abuse Council. It is an order, committee, uh, for number two, please?
Thank you, Honorable Chairman. I move to pass a resolution allocating an amount of 84,550 for the expenses to be incurred during the strengthening collaboration for effective barangay drug clearing, coordination meeting with the PDA and BADAX in the municipality of So Good Southern Late, chargeable against Anti-Drug Abuse Council.
Thank you, Honorable Paranas. There is a motion of Honorable Paranas, anybody to second the motion? Motion seconded, uh, unanimously seconded, Honorable Galdo? Unanimously seconded by all the members present, the motion is served by carried and approved. Third is a passage of a resolution allocating an amount of 190,000 pesos for the expenses to be incurred during the LGU So Good Rural Health Unit Dental Services Establishment in the municipality of So Good, So Good Southern Late, chargeable against the LGU's Phil Health Chair. Our Chair on Health, Honorable, uh, uh, Diarmi, please?
Chairman, I move to pass a resolution allocating an amount of 190,000 pesos for the expenses to be incurred during the LGU So Good Rural Health Unit Dental Services Establishment in the municipality of So Good, chargeable against Phil Health? Phil Health? Phil Health Chair, thank you.
There is a motion, uh, we've heard the motion of Honorable, uh, Diarmi, anybody to second the motion? Seconded by Honorable Sulo, we have Villia, uh, Atwill, um, we have also Honorable Loremia, Honorable Filear, Galdo, and Honorable Casil Senior. Questions? Clarification? Objection? The Chair has none, the motion is served by carried. Passage of a resolution authorizing the payment of the catering service tender during the open government partnership or OGP localization program documentation of the open government practices in municipality of So Good at the Municipal Conference Hall of So Good last August 7, 2025, in the amount of 9,000 pesos, chargeable against other maintenance and operating expenses under the MOE of the mayor's office. We request Honorable Atwill, our, uh, for the passage of this resolution.
I move to pass a resolution payment on catering service standard during the opening of government partnerships, OGP, localization programs, documentation, and open government practices in the municipality of So Good and Municipal Conference Hall, So Good Southern Late on August 7, 2025, in the amount of 9,000 pesos, chargeable against other maintenance and operating expenses under the MOE of the mayor's office. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable, uh, Atwill. There is a motion of Honorable Atwill, anybody to second the motion? Uh, the same, uh, seconded by Honorable Sulo, Villia, Loremia, uh, we have Diarmi, Filear, Gabrino, Galdo, and Casil Senior. Questions? Clarification? Objection? There is none, the motion is served by carried and approved. Number five and the last is a passage of a resolution authorizing the payment of snacks standard during the Civil Society Organization Conference at the second floor DILG Liga, Liga Building on August 12, 2025, in the amount of 6,000 pesos, chargeable against other maintenance and operating expenses under the MOE of the mayor's office. Uh, we request our Chair on Finance, Honorable Casil, uh, for the passage of a resolution.
I move to pass a resolution authorizing payment of snacks standard during the Civil Society Organization Conference at 2F JLG Liga Building on August 12, 2025, in the amount of 6,000 pesos, chargeable against other maintenance and operating expense under the MOE of the mayor's office. Thank you, Honorable Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable, uh, Casil. There is a motion, anybody to second the motion? Seconded by Honorable Sulo, we have, uh, Villia, Loremia, Sulo, uh, Filear, Gabrino, and Galdo. Questions? Clarification? Honorable, uh, Diarmi, have questions?
Question, uh, the DILG should not be included anymore because they are not at the Liga Building anymore, so it's only second floor Liga Building. Thank you.
Thank you for the observation, Honorable, um, Diarmi. So can they delete the word? DILG, it should be second floor of the Liga Building. Uh, there is no objection, the, uh, it has been moved and seconded. The motion of Honorable, uh, Casil is served by carried and approved. We are through with the resolutions from the office of the Municipal Mayor. We will now cater the earmark resolutions during the, uh, privilege hour. Where's? Oh. So we will continue with, uh, number two of the other resolutions in order of business. Number two is a resolution requesting the Commission on Audit or COA for the demolition of the temporary stalls that will be affected by the construction of the fish port, uh, solar-powered gold storage with chinset and ice plant at Barangay Zone 3 of So Good Southern Late. Uh, Honorable Sulo?
Uh, thank you, Honorable Chairman. Uh, considering that this stalls was, uh, uh, constructed by this local government unit using the government funds, so we have to request, uh, clearance from the Commission on Audit, Honorable Chairman. At this juncture, I move to pass a resolution requesting the Commission on Audit for the demolition of the temporary stalls that will be affected by the construction of the new fish port as financed by the Philippine Fisheries Development Authority. Number two, the solar-powered gold storage with chinset as financed by the Department of Agriculture, and the ice plant is which is financed by there is an aquatic resources all at Barangay Zone 3, So Good Southern Late.
Thank you, Honorable Sulo. There is a motion, you've heard the motion of the Honorable Rafa Sulo. Anybody to second the motion? Motion is, uh, seconded unanimously seconded by all the members present, the motion is served by carried and approved. Third is a resolution authorizing the payment of snacks standard in the amount of 2,500 pesos for the public hearing conducted on the proposed Municipal Ordinance Number 2025-355, chargeable against other maintenance and operating expenses under, under the Sangguyang Bayan Office. Uh, may I request Honorable Galdo for, for number three?
I move to pass a resolution authorizing payment of snacks in the amount of 2,500 pesos for the public hearing conducted at the proposed Municipal Ordinance Number 2025-355, chargeable against other maintenance and operating expenses under the Sangguyang Bayan Office. Thank you, Honorable Chair.
Thank you, Honorable, uh, Galdo. There is a motion, anybody to second the motion? Honorable, uh, Sulo, Villia, uh, Atwill, we have Honorable Loremia, Diarmi, uh, Filear, Casil, seconded the motion. Questions? Clarification? Objection? There is none, the motion is served by carried. Under the privilege, uh, hour, we have earmark resolutions. We have first to earmark is Honorable Loremia. We have one resolution. This will be followed by Honorable Galdo with three resolutions. Honorable Loremia first?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I have, uh, one financial assistance under the office of the mayor. I already text to the mayor and also have a letter of, uh, Honorable Mayor. So I would like to pass a resolution granting financial assistance in favor to Nancy Brunio for the two female So Good known athletes to participate Batang Pinoy National Compete, Competition on October 5, October 25 to 30 in amount of Juan Blanca. I wala pa yung replies, Mayor, under MOE, chargeable against under MOE of the office of the mayor. Thank you, Honorable Chair. Yeah, follow up lang na Juan. Oh, what pa may reply?
So there is a motion of Honorable Loremia, anybody to second the motion? Uh, seconded by Atwill, Villia, we have Filear, Diarmi, Casil, and Galdo, and also Honorable Gabrino seconded the motion. Questions? Clarification? Uh, there is no objection. Uh, the motion is served by carried and approved. We have three resolutions for Honorable, uh, Livy Galdo, please?
I move to pass a resolution granting financial assistance to Project Zero to join the International Dance Competition, which is the Champion Store Finals in Indonesia this coming November 21 to 25, uh, 23, 2025, through Miss Regenville Ria Alila in the amount of 10,000 pesos, chargeable against donation under MOE of the mayor's office. Thank you, Honorable Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Galdo. There is a motion for financial assistance to, this is a group of, uh, So Good known dancers. They will be competing in Indonesia as part of the Champion Store, in the amount of 10,000 pesos. There is a motion, anybody to second, uh, the same motion? Uh, Honorable Sulo, Paranas, Villia, Loremia, uh, Casil, uh, Filear, Gabrino, and Diarmi. Uh, questions? Clarification? Objection? The Chair has none, the motion is served by carried. Second, Honorable, uh, Galdo?
Thank you, Honorable Chair. I move to pass a resolution granting medical assistance to Mr. Ruel Kondok of Barangay Mabikay, So Good Southern Late, in the amount of 3,000 pesos, chargeable against donation under MOE of the mayor's office. Thank you, Honorable Chair.
You've heard the motion of Honorable, uh, Livy Galdo for financial assistance, anybody to second? The seconded by Honorable Sulo, Villia, uh, we have Gabrino, uh, Filear, and Honorable Casil. Questions? Clarification? Objection? The Chair has none, the motion is served by carried and approved. And the last, Honorable Galdo?
Thank you, Honorable Chair. I move to pass a resolution granting financial assistance to Salikabataan Youth Cultural Compete Competition in cooperation with Liga ng mga barangay and Sangguyang Kabataan Federation this coming September 13 to 30, 2025. The amount, Honorable Chairman, and the activity design is to follow, Honorable Chairman. So chargeable against donation under the MOE of the mayor's office through Liga ng mga barangay of So Good, Honorable Chairman.
There is a motion of Honorable Galdo, you've heard the motion of Honorable Livy Galdo, anybody to second the said motion? Second, uh, dead by Honorable Sulo, Paranas, Loremia, we have Casil, uh, Filear, and Diarmi, and Gabrino. Questions? Clarification? Objection? The Chair has none, the motion is served by carried and approved. That would be all for the resolutions, Honorable Galdo. We are now on petitions. We have not received petition, uh, today's session, communication. Uh, we have already discussed the communication earlier. Unassigned business, we have none, committee report? No committee report this morning? Uh, yes, Honorable, uh, Sulo, we have committee report?
Thank you, Honorable Chairman. I would like to ask the indulgence of our, of my colleagues to permit me the committee report, considering that this was handed to me just right now, Honorable Chairman, and I think everybody has a copy of the committee report.
Okay, go ahead, Honorable Sulo for your report.
Likewise, uh, I think here is also another report by the Committee on Finance. Considering that this was already recognized, so this is with regards to the operation of the night market, Honorable Chairman, uh, in our municipality, and I think everybody has a copy, so kindly read the copy, and if you have any questions, this representation would like to, would gladly answer your questions. Thank you.
Kindly read the report of Honorable Sulo, and you may ask questions to the reporter? Particularly the recommendations, the recommendations of the report are the following. Number one, amendments of the night market ordinance if necessary. Second is no more vendors allowed in front of the town center or the pure gold. Number three is balot vendors should be provided with an area because they are paying also an amount of 50 pesos per night, and there are around four balot vendors so far. You may ask questions, Honorable, uh, Villia, you may ask Honorable, uh, Sulo for any inquiry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I just want to, to highlight the, um, the responsibilities of So Good Night Market Association because it's written here for regarding the sanitation and the cleanliness of the night market area. I would like also to, to give importance on the sanitation also regarding the food that they are selling and the people who are handling the, the food because I noticed, mang good, they have a night market when they are selling their barbecues, no? They don't have hand gloves, and as Vice Chairman of the Committee on Health and Sanitation, I, I see the importance of using hand gloves. Kay kung mag-barbecue po na sila, after that, magmanigarilyo or magusay lang hawiran. And I want to give the, the importance of the sanitation regarding the food that they are handling. So, kay di rin mang good gibutang sanitation or cleanliness of the night market area. So ako lang i-suggest na atong i-appel po ang kanang, uh, mga pagkaon na ilang gibaligya and the people who are handling, uh, the food. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Villia. Honorable Sulo?
Okay, thank you, Honorable Chairman, for the, that question of Honorable Villia. Uh, during the meeting, a part of the requirements of the night market holders is the permits and licenses from the local government unit. That includes the, uh, sanitary permit from the RHO, and with regards to, uh, restaurants and other establishments offering food, they are required for a food handling, uh, seminar, Honorable Chairman. So that is one of the requirements prior to the issuance of any permit, Honorable Chairman. So we can ensure that, uh, this- that this, their personals in the night market are being issued with a food handling certificate by the Rural Health Unit of this municipality, Honorable Chairman. Likewise, if to make the contention of Honorable Villia, we can also include her the maintained peace and order, sanitation, and cleanliness of the area, including their foods that being sold in the night market area, Honorable Chairman. Thank you.
Honorable Olo, I think this is, this is for the lookout of the officers of the SNMA sa Sugod Night Market Association. So that every food handlers in that night market would be wearing the required hand gloves. Because that is part, I think, of the handling, food handling seminar that they have undertaken. Other questions to the Honorable Paranas? You have questions?
Actually, Honorable Chairman, this is not a question, just a suggestion, Honorable Chairman. If, is it possible that one of the roles and responsibilities of the LGU also to, to control the prices or regulate the price of the product that will be sold in the, Honorable Chairman, the Public Night Market Association? If it is possible, Honorable Chairman, that one of the responsibilities of the LGU is to regulate or control the prices of the products or food that will be sold in the night market?
I think, Honorable Olo, was this tackled during the discussion?
Honorable Chairman, during the discussion, we did not happen to discuss the prices of their food being displayed in the night market. But I think we can add this in their roles and responsibility of the Night Market Association that they will offer fair and, the price of their merchandise, Honorable Chairman, of their foods being sold at the night market. Fair price for their, Juan?
The barbecue?
Oo.
Okay. And also, in addition, Honorable Paranas?
Because I have a chance to visit or enjoy the food in Libagon, the new night market located in Barangay Pangi. And they have an ordinance also that only the constituents of Barangay Pangi can enjoy or can display. So, naka compare ko sa presyo dito o sa ato. Mahal na dud kaadjo ang ato. Kung posible nga, nakabaligya sila ingat to na price. Nganong dilimantangad, dool dool lang magaling ta sa merkado dire. So, Honorable Chairman, tingali sakto dud kaadjo nga. Maapil sa recommendation ang pag-include sa responsibilities and rules sa LGU to control and regulate the prices of the night market. Thank you, Honorable Chairman.
Honorable Paranas, with this concern, I think the president of the night market will be given a copy. I hope we will be having a copy of this, this report. This is very valuable also the part of the, the part of the officers, not only the president. Now, these are the matters that has been taken up by the Sanggungyang Bayan, including the lowering of the prices of the products that they have displayed at the market area, on the night market. And also on to the other recommendations as found in this report. So, we will request the Secretariat to give copy of this report to the officers of the Sugod Night Market. Honorable Paranas?
An idea also pop up in my mind, Honorable Chairman, if possible, the night market also, stall owners can also provide special prices for the students considering that most of the customers in night market are students. If naa sila chance or naa sila, maka consider sila special prices for the students, Honorable Chairman?
Okay, so that would be one of these discussions to be made also with the president of the night market. All these concerns will be brought out. I will also talk personally with the Chair, Mr. Odarbi, as the president of the night market. I will also talk to him regarding your concerns.
Honorable Chairman, if, if, magkahistorian na mo, Honorable Chairman, palihog na lamang pakingon nga maappreciate kaadjo sa Sanggungyang ang pong naa magaling sila special prices for the students. And kay kasagaran magud ako makita, Honorable Chairman, dud, kasagaran majority, mga estudyante dud o mga empleyado. Ang nangti dud sila ang ay magpataas na ilang presyo.
I will, will take it, Honorable Paranas. So, no more questions? Still have one, Honorable Villia?
In addition sa katong mga presyo, Honorable Chairman, I think it would be better also if, if stall owners have the same kind of item, same prices lang puntana, uniform prices lang. Example, if they're selling the barbecues, no? At least they have all the same prices para maakuwanan ka ng competition bituin ha sa night market. And if they're selling also like shakes, so it will be the same price with another stall. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, noted, Honorable Villia. Honorable Olo?
Okay, thank you, Honorable Chairman. That was already discussed during the meeting, Honorable Chairman. That is even part of the, the constitution and bylaws of the Sugod Night Market Association. And they will have a uniform price. They will, mura, ikuwan nila ang area for barbecues, area for balots, area for karing mga fried, kuan nga mga , mga, mga pick foods. One is part of their, in their constitution and bylaws of the association, Honorable Chairman, that there will be no competition within the Sugod Night Market. They will arrange the stalls as long as this memorandum of agreement will be finalized, Honorable Chairman. Thank you.
The information, Honorable Paranas?
Just a comment to the Honorable Villia's suggestion to make a uniform prices. Because kung shake, naa magui mahalon nga shake, unzun napui baratuhan nga shake, eh depende man na sa kanang ingredients nga gibutang o sa klase nga gibutang. Kana may shake nga katong baratuhan ra, dilim man na pwedig i-uniform sa katong shake nga mahalon. So, tingali na ay dilik kaadjo na pwedig, kinahanglan bitali, eh para maconsistent sa atong ordinance sa, ay sa atong agreement. Kaya di man pwede tong baratuhan ra, kay baratuhan ra o ingredients atong ipareha sa mahalon o ingredients, Honorable Chairman.
Okay.
Ang tingali, ang maguniform, like chicken barbecue, maguniform dud na, o pork barbecue, maguniform dud na. But when it comes to kanang na ay mga lahi-lahing na flavor, oh dilim na na sila pwedig maguniform, kay malkanse maputong mahalon, dya uniform sa baratuhan.
Okay.
Thank you.
Honorable Olo?
Honorable Chairman, I think that was answered by the president, Mr. Glenn Odarbi, that they will have a uniform prices. If the one will be, will use a good ingredients and the other will not, then I think the problem there is that those that not putting a good ingredients will have no customer. Kay, Juan man, ingan na mo na, ang ilad dya, only that they have the uniform price. If you will itipid ang imong ingredients, then your customer will big one also. Dilim na mo balik.
So, in other words, Honorable Olo, tanan deng products ilang uniform na to discourage competition nilang between themselves? Now, in the constitution and bylaws, CBL na nila sa association. Okay, no more questions to the report?
Just additional one question, Honorable Chairman. So, after, after ano, magmeeting na maputno para i-include na tong mga suggestion and recommendation during this report, no, Honorable?
Including that.
No more, but we will just give copies to the Sugod Night Market Association as to the recommendations. And if they are amenable, then they will sign the memorandum agreement with the local government unit.
That was, that is answered now by Honorable Olo, Honorable Paranas. So, no more questions for the approval, adoption of the minutes, Honorable Olo of the report?
Thank you, Honorable Chairman. I move for the adoption and approval of the report of the Committee on Market with regards to the discussion on the operation of the Sugod Night Market Association in the night, Sugod Night Market along Concepcion Street, Sugod Suronliti. Thank you, Honorable Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Olo. There's a motion for the adoption and approval of the minutes of the committee meeting of the request of the Sugod Night Market Association. Anybody to second the motion? Seconded by Honorable Villia, we have Honorable Loremia, Fai Nar, Gabrino, and Diarmee, and Casil Senior, also seconded. Questions, clarification, objection? The chair has none. The motion is served by Karetan and approved.
For the action, Honorable Chairman?
For the action?
I would just defer the passage of the action for the authorization of the mayor to sign the MUA, waiting for the final decision of the final draft of the memorandum of agreement, Honorable Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Honorable Olo for that. Yes, one year ago pa na, oh, changes, no? Okay, so we're through with the report of the Honorable Olo. We will now entertain by the report of Honorable Casil.
I think everybody has a copy with regard to my report. Held on June 13, 2025 at SBC Station Hall. Review the Barangay Malina Ordinance Number 2025 entitled Barangay Tax Ordinance of Barangay Malina, Sugod Suronliti. So, if you have any question regarding my report, so.
The, the copy was distributed, Honorable Casil? Okay. Okay. Okay, if you have questions to the report, Honorable Atwill has asked a suggestion to the, to the report of Honorable Casil. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Only a suggestion regarding the Chapter 3, Section 1, Barangay Business Tax. So, stated here is big establishment and small establishment. So, I think, Mr. Chair, the proper siguro nga firm is small, micro, small, medium, and large. Kaya the business is not be categorized into big and small. So, if their payment is 300, so divide, divide into four, micro, small, medium, and large. So, 75, 100, 150, or 300. Okay, the maximum price here is, big establishment is 300. And the other one, Mr. Chair, is Chap, Article, Chapter 3, Article 3.1, Hospital Bills, Boreal Assist, Boreal Assistance Ayuda and Proposes, stated here is 00. So, what are we say about 00?
Um, I don't have a copy of the report, sorry. So, I cannot follow the discussion. May, may ask one copy, please? Sige lang, key lang, key lang, okay? Also, original copy for the Secretariat? Okay. So, this is for Barangay Malina, Sugod, Sugod Suronliti. So, what is your concern, Honorable Atwill?
Chapter 3, Article A, Section 3.1, 1.1.
Uh, Chapter 3?
Article A, Section 1.1, about Barangay Clearance for the Proposes, Business Tax. Stated here is for big establishment and small establishment. So, talking about establishment, will be categorized into micro, small, medium, and large according to the DTI about establishment. Letter D?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, what, what page is that? Page 2?
Page 1.
Page 1?
Page 1.
All right. Number 2, Paragraph F?
D.
Letter D? Okay, so there is a suggestion of the Honorable Atwill, Honorable Casil to categorize this, these two, small establishment and the big establishment. Uh, to be, to be categorized as small, medium?
Micro, micro.
Uh, micros?
Small.
Small, medium, and large enterprise. Because there is no actual, there, there is no, uh, it cannot be a big establishment. It's not supposedly, is, should, should not be used as in categorizing an establishment. Should not be small, it should not be defined as small and big. So, kinalan ko na, micro, small, micro?
Medium and large.
Medium and large.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Honorable Casil?
With regard to this, uh, business permit, small and big, so di barangay ka na collect the more than 30,000 amount per year po. Then he, dilim na maoper ang medium o, Juan, and only barangay ramangun na dya. Then, um,
Clearance?
Um, big establishment is certification na ni ilang yatan, which is?
According to Chapter 3, discussing about barangay clearance for purposes, not including the income.
Uh, okay, Honorable Olo?
As the Vice Chair of this Committee, Honorable Chairman, that is the content of the barangay ordinance of Barangay Malina, Honorable Chairman. But the final recommendation of the committee is that the barangay can only collect barangay clearance at the rate of 280 per issuance and 50 pesos per service fee. There is no identification whether it is micro, small, medium, or large, Honorable Chairman, because that is not within the power of the barangay. What, what the barangay is only to issue the barangay business clearance, to issue to issue barangay certification on, only if they can collect barangay business tax for those businesses that are below 30,000 and below, Honorable Chairman. So the, the report says that the barangay cannot issue the uh, this cannot be, this will be, this is recommended for rectification to the barangay that they cannot collect with a different amount for small, big, and business because they, we are not talking here about the tax because we are talking here about only the clearance and the certification, Honorable Chairman. Whether it is big or small establishment, the clearance is the same. Thank you, Honorable Chairman.
Okay, yes, go ahead, Honorable Atwill.
Chapter 3, letter B, hospital bills, burial assistance, ayuda purposes stated there, 00.
Okay, certificate about indigency?
Oh, na 00. 00, manay day.
Under letter B?
Oh.
Okay. In this, in this other paragraph B, our number 3, paragraph F sa paragraph B, certificate of indigency for financial assistance or ayuda purposes, 100 pesos. Certificate of Indigency for hospital bill, burial, etc., except for ayuda purposes. Uh, there is no
That is the content of their ordinance, Honorable Chairman. But the final recommendation of the committee is that in the lower portion, that the final recommendation for chapter 3, Article A, Section 1.3 certification piece is 280 also, then 50 pesos service charge. However, for school, scholarship, and study grant, which is 100, for indigency, which is 100 plus service fee of 50. And for visa purposes such as coconut trees is covered by Republic Act 1048, Honorable Chairman.
So
Republic Act 10593.
593. So this, this is already answered in the recommendation, no?
In the report, Honorable Chairman.
Final recommendations, yeah.
150 ni.
Uh, but I have one correction to this report, Honorable Chairman.
Yes.
Considering that I was not around during the meeting because I was on official travel, Honorable Chairman. With regards to the findings and recommendation of number 1, letter F, that it is a common knowledge that some residents of barangay Malina engage in backyard hog racing business as one of their livelihood, no? Uh, it is a recommended data, the backyard racers will secure business permit, Honorable Chairman. Uh, I think as per Department Administrative, uh, Department of Agriculture Administrative Order, Honorable Chairman, there is a distinction, this is together with the Philippine Statistics Authority between a backyard garden, backyard racing, and a commercial garden and commercial racing, Honorable Chairman. That if for poultry, Honorable Chairman, uh, the backyard poultry is cumulaterm as small hold farm by the Philippine Statistics Authority considering that if we will look at it internationally, there is no backyard racing in other countries. So to make it globally understandable, so they change it to a small hold, then semi-commercial and commercial farm. So with regards to swine, Honorable Chairman, a small hold farm is 20 heads and below, 20 heads sow, so kaanay. And that, the requirement for this is only a barangay certification, Honorable Chairman, barangay permit. For goat, not more than 35 does. For cattle, not more than five cows and five carlings. For poultry, for egg and meat, a small hold farm racing is 500 birds and below. For chicken, free range, and learducks, 250 birds and below. That is within the barangay and will not secure business permit from the municipality, Honorable Chairman. So I think we have to look into this, that it is exempted from the securing of business permit, but only barangay permit, Honorable Chairman. But above these numbers, Honorable Chairman, they should they will be required to get a business permit including the environmental requirements, Honorable Chairman, as to CNC or environmental compliance certificate and other documents needed for this type of business model. Thank you, Honorable Chairman. So dilining number 1, please.
Okay. So with regards to the tax ordinance, there a need to, to because there are some, there's a need to return the ordinance to barangay Malinao? Yes?
Uh, considering that there are, there are some question regarding this committee report, Mr. Chairman. So I would eh, balik lang, I will return back to the one barangay and all recommendation of the committee according the members of this August body were reconsiderato.
I suggest that this recommendation number 1 will be deleted, Honorable Chairman. Kay what may, what may mga dagko nga mga pig res, poultry, and kuwan in barangay Malinao. But pwede nila, ibot, agenikay di mapunin nila. It is the municipalities' role namapod if their backyard, backyard racing of swine is more than 20 sow. Sa topa, 20 kaanay. 20 kaanay. If kuwan, if naay mga patining, 40 heads pod ang ob grower and finishers, nga kanang mag-grower ka. Pero ug nunakay anay ug kanang patining only 10 heads of sow and 20 heads of grower finisher. Sa topa, ang limit sa backyard is only 10 sow and 20 grower and finisher. Og anay ra, no may upan nga anay ra niya, blighya ang mga piglets after giving birth, 20 heads of sow. Monay limit for backyard pig racing, hog racing, Honorable Chairman.
Okay.
So barangay permit, tanas isa, so dilik, dilik business permit from the municipality.
Uh, with regards to this concern and discussions, Honorable Casil, I think there's a need to, to conduct committee discussions with the barangay themselves so that all these suggestions, also by Honorable Olo, will also be disseminated to the barangay. And concerning also, on to some other um, suggestions of Honorable Atwill, nga katong dinisgutan kanina. So there's a need to, to discuss again to the barangay Malinao. Okay, so for now, we will, you will, uh, you just give a schedule for the Secretariat to talk with the barangay concern. So we will for the adoption, approval of the minutes lang, Honorable Atwill. Uh, Casil?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to adoption and approval of the committee reports on committee on finance of proposed ordinance of barangay, barangay Malinao. barangay Malinao, Sogod Southern Litte.
Okay, so the, there is a motion of the Honorable Casil for the adoption and approval of the minutes of the meeting of the Committee on Finance regarding the ordinance number 25 dash 1 of barangay Malinao of this municipality. There's a motion, anybody to second the motion? Seconded by Galdo, Filear, we have DeHermie, Gabrino, Villia, and Luremia. Questions? Clarification? Objection? There's none. The motion is served by Kared. Honorable Casil kindly give the schedule to the Secretariat?
So I would like to schedule this coming
September?
September 12.
Uh, that's Friday?
The morning, if divided as amenable members of the committee.
September?
September 12.
You have another schedule on September 12 at 9:00 AM regarding Nisan sa Mam. Okay, and this is another subject matter. So, arin na lang sa hapon?
Hapon, hapon na lang. 2:00 PM.
2:00 PM with the barangay council of barangay Malinao of this municipality. So thank you, Honorable.
And also, I would like to include the communication with Chairman to Engineer Tom DeHermie.
Okay. Our consultant, DeHermie, also will be invited during that meeting. Okay, so we're through with the report of the Honorable Casil Senior. We are, we are now under matters, number 17, discussion, other matters. Honorable Gabrino?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was about to make a query regarding this, but I was just presently informed nga na date ay committee meeting as a whole later afternoon. Uh, I was just about to ask regarding our second readings atwang ordinance sa official logos atong Sogodang Bayan. I would just like to suggest, apilon na lamang na to ang diya hapon. Okay, nakaschedule mo to committee as a whole for second reading, pero mo na magulat na to mga scheduling, ma'am, no? Include na lamang na to ang diya hapon, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, so thank you, Honorable Gabrino. Any discussions? More? Uh, for your own other matters? We have none? Our meeting is around 2 o'clock, 2 o'clock in the afternoon. PCL activities, uh, discussions on the barangay zone 3, and uh, formulation? Uh, here, the, the agenda for the committee of the hall. Yes, other matters? Okay, the, yes, Honorable Olo? Okay, there's a motion to adjourn considering that it's already 12 o'clock in the afternoon. Seconded by Honorable Atwill and Luremia and Galdo and Filear. Yes, it has been moved and seconded. The motion of the Honorable Olo is heard by uh, this regular session is heard by adjourn as move by Honorable Olo. Thank you for your attendance and good afternoon, everyone.